Orders, zoning board of appeals, town of Fairfield, for June 2, 2022. We have two items on our agenda for executive session. The first is approval of the minutes, Thursday, special meeting, May 12, 2022. Entertainer motion to approve.
Move.
Thank you, Jane. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, is there a discussion? Hearing no discussion, bring it to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? None. Motion carries. Second is approval of secretary's fees. Entertainer motion to approve.
So move.
Galise, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. A little flip-flop there. And a discussion. Hearing no discussion, bring it to a vote again. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? None. Opposed, no abstentions. Motion carries. And we will be reconvening our executive session after our public hearing, which will start in about five minutes. And I'll make the announcements about the reconvening, but everyone during the opening of the public hearing, but everyone's welcome to stay when we return to our working session, because we'll be discussing matters that go forward today. So we're going to suspend for about five minutes before I open up the public hearing. Call back to order, Fairfield, zoning board of appeals, our public hearing, June 2, 2022. When I call a matter to be heard, at that time, the applicant or his or her agent will present their case. If you have items or documents to share, please distribute them to the board members during your presentation, not during while I'm talking about your call or the matter before us while giving the call. And I think you'll understand I'm describing the address and what you want to do, and that needs to be clear for the records. Don't stand over us trying to hand us documents to review during that time. But at any time during your presentation, anything you want us to consider, you know, that's fine. We're happy to consider it, present it to us so we can make it part of the record. That's your prerogative, whatever you think is necessary. After the applicant's presentation, anyone who's interested in the matter will be invited to come up and speak. I will first invite those in favor of the application, and then if there are people there that wanted to speak in favor, I'll let them speak. Then I will invite anyone who opposes that application to come forward and speak. If there is any opposition, the applicant or his or her agent will be afforded an opportunity to address or rebut those statements in opposition. This is my notice to the applicant or agent. If it's a rebuttal, please address your comments to the opposition. It's not a time to restate your entire application. This meeting's being taped, and that's required by state law. The reason it's required by state law is we need to create a record, because anyone who's interested, depending on the law or the requirements, you may be able to appeal this decision. So we need for the record to be clear. Therefore, only one person can speak at a time. Anyone who does speak must come over to the podium, give your name and address. I welcome, the board welcomes comments from anyone who's interested, whether you're in favor. Obviously, the applicant's in favor, but if you're in favor or opposed to a particular application. However, I will reserve my right as chairman to restrict your comments if you go far off, too far off the point. I mentioned a call. That is describing basically what the applicant is seeking for this board to do. So that is what we are addressing, and that is what your comments should be related to, what the applicant is seeking for relief, for variance, as a variance from this board. Applicants and interested people can remain in attendance after the public hearing, depending how long it takes. For a public hearing, you may take a short break, and then we'll reconvene our working session and be voting on each application that goes forward today. There are five voting members of the zoning board of appeals. In order for your application to be granted, you need a supermajority. You need at least four of the five to vote in your favor. If it is a simple majority, three to two in favor, that has been denied. If you cannot stay for when we reconvene the working session, and you want to find out what was, what has happened, you're welcome to call the zoning office tomorrow to find out. However, I think it's very important for people, you know, if you have any interest in the matter, is to stay, because sometimes there's a lot of discussion about a matter, and sometimes you'll find out why the board is deciding what they're deciding. And I think it's helpful to the applicants, and I think it's helpful for the people that have a position on an application, whether you're in favor of it or against it. So we welcome you to stay, but that's not a time to talk. That's a time for us to talk as the board. If an application for a waiver is granted, it will not be valid until it's recorded on the land records. In order to do that, you must send or bring a check to the zoning office, the amount of $60 made out to the town of Fairfield, Wednesday or later following the meeting. That will allow for proper recording of the notice. Any waiver involving construction, whether it's new dwelling addition or alteration, will require an as-built prior to the issuance of a certificate of zoning compliance and a certificate of occupancy. Now go on to the public hearing, and I'm going to be calling the matters in order that they appear on our agenda. First matter on our agenda is from our continued docket, and that is number 3, 1386 Hillside Road, map 173, parcel 73, petition of Eric and Heather Malin for variance of the zoning regulation, section 5.2.4, to reduce the street line setback from 60 feet, currently 42, 45.2 feet, excuse me, proposing 34.3 feet, permission to construct a one-story pool house premises AAA zone. Attorney Fallon, this is yours?
It is, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, members of the board. Good afternoon. For the record, my name is John Fallon. I'm here representing Eric and Heather Malin, who are the owners of the property at 1386 Hillside Road. As the poll just read indicates, we're seeking a variance of the street setback in order to construct a proposed pool house, as shown on the plan submitted here with. The property is located in the residence AAA zone, as I'll elaborate on momentarily. It's oddly shaped, it's a corner lot, and it has very unique and challenging separability. Located on the property is a two-and-a-half-story residence and an existing in-ground pool. The proposed pool house is to be located immediately south of that existing swimming pool. Before I talk about the legal underpinnings of the application, I'd like to call on John Maluski of Architect, our architect on this matter, who'll give you a brief overview of the pool house design.
Hi, I'm John Maluski. I'm with David Scott Parker Architects, representing our client, Eric and Heather Malin, at 1386 Hillside Road. The property in question, the existing residence, which you can see in the background here, was built in the 1830s and expanded in the 1860s. The formal gardens that you see here were created by Agnes Selkirk Clark, who was one of the first and a noteworthy female landscape architects, were done in the 1940s. The property was, the portico, which you can sort of see over here, and those of you who don't have the house and driven by it on hillside might be familiar with the portico that was designed by her husband, the renowned architect Kramer Clark, in the 1850s. Our office, under the design direction of David Scott Parker, designed and oversaw the construction of the south portico, which centers on these formal gardens. That was done in the early 1890s. The pool house that's proposed now, which offers important and critical functions to the existing pool, is laid out on direct access with these formal gardens, again, which date back to the 1840s. It is, its orientation on access is there to respect the gardens, which are some of the few gardens left by that architect. It is the appropriate location architecturally for a building of this type. It's colonial revival style, is consistent with the most important colonial revival details of the main house, and, you know, as such, it is entirely keeping with the character of that property. Located somewhere else off access or to the side would really be a detriment architecturally to the important layout of those formal gardens and of the house itself, right? The house, the carriage house features includes basically, you know, bath, shower, a bar, and just a small space to get out of the sun. So it's actually not particularly large, and its form actually does echo the shape, even the roof shape, of a garden structure that had been there previously, but it's been demolished.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. So let me discuss if I might briefly the underpinnings here from a legal perspective. As the board knows, under Connecticut general statutes 8-6A3, you have to make two findings. One, that what is proposed is not going to substantially affect the comprehensive zoning plan, and that, two, there are factors with regard to the property that establish hardship for purposes of supporting the granting of variance. With regard to the first part of the test, it has been held, and I cite the Eagan case in my material, that if the use to be made after the variance is granted, if it permitted use in the zone, then the first part of that test is satisfied. That's certainly the case here, in that the granting of the variance will not change the use of the property, which will remain as a single-family residence that is explicitly permitted in the zone. Other than the variance requested for the street setback, no other variances are sought, and the proposed construction will comply with all the other technical requirements of the regulation. The proposed new pool house, as designed by John and his colleagues at David Scott Parker Architects, I think you will agree, I hope you will, was attractive, harmonizes with the character of the neighborhood, and represents a very significant aesthetic enhancement to the property. In that regard, I did submit electronically copies. We did speak to all of our neighbors, and if I can approach the board, I have a copy that is the same as was submitted electronically. But these are all of our surrounding neighbors, and I think it's fair to say they were very pleased with the design and the enhancements to the property. With regard to the hardship, there are three, actually four, classic basis of hardship that present themselves in this case. First of all, the lot is uniquely configured, as you can see from the site plan, and as the law holds, it's such a unique configuration, does provide a proper basis for a finding of hardship, especially with regard to the granting of setback variances. The lot's shape does directly implicate compliance with the street setback requirement. The second factor are those cases I cite in my material, that this is a corner lot, bounded by Hillside Road to the west and Old Academy Road to the east. Our Supreme Court and the Archibald case and others that I cite stands for the proposition that a street line setback variance has a hardship basis when the lot is in fact a corner lot, bounded on two sides rather than one, by way of the street setback. The third basis is the historic location of the pre-existing structure. Obviously, the pool has been located, as John indicated, for many, many decades, and this is a pool house, and to make it functional and properly functional is such is the historic location of the pool house, that has an impact in terms of where the pool is, the currently non-conforming pool is located. The last is, of course, the topography of the property, which case law defines the topography implicated protection of a variance, and that I think we have in this case as well. So by way of summary, I think the pool house is very attractively designed. It'll be an enhancement to the already beautiful and will maintain property. The neighbors are aware of our proposal and endorse it, and technically, I think will comply with the provisions of 8-6 statute, based upon the shape of the lot, the unique topography of the lot, the fact that it is a corner lot, and the fact that the existing pool structure is already there and implicates where the pool house will go. So if you'd be pleased to answer any questions that you might have, and hope you will favorably consider the application.
The board have any questions for Attorney Fallon or Mr. Maluski? Our spec?
This is Harold. I have a question. Are there outbuildings on the property?
There are.
John, if you want to... There is a, I don't think I have a copy of the survey here.
Did they show on the survey?
If you saw the survey. There is a carriage house that would be really on the other side of the main house. There's also an old horse stable, which is, which is even further on the other side of the property.
And do one of those include the garage?
No, the garage for the house is attached to the house. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing no other questions. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Is there anyone signing in that wishes to speak to this application, one way or the other? It is 1386 Hillside Road. Hearing no further comments, we'll close the hearing on 1386 Hillside Road.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our second item on our agenda, which is also on our continued docket, number 12, 888 Old Field Road, that has been continued to July. We move on to the general docket. First matter on the general docket, number one, which is 11 South Field Road, map 231, parcel 259, petition of Edward C. and Jean L. Mason for variance of zoning regulation, section 5.2.5, to increase lot coverage from 20% currently, 23.4%. Permission to legitimize a construction-era premises A zone. I think the Masons were presenting that?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Ed Mason. My wife's name is, but they didn't move when she was sitting there. We moved to Fairfield in 1988, when our daughter was roughly eight months old, and in the time since, we've raised a family of three here, love being part of the community. Frankly, about 2000, our family had grown to the point that we approached this committee and saw a variance to add on to our home that variance was granted. When construction was finished, and our contractor delivered our newly expanded home, told us, he told us that frankly, everything's set, enjoy. As his life, our kids have grown, they have formed a group, and they're living life on the road now, and we find ourselves empty nesters with a house that is quite honestly a lot bigger than our current needs. As a result, we decided to sell our home to downside. And as part of putting the house on the market, we undertook what would be the normal due diligence. In that process, we found out that our variance from 22 years ago had not been closed out, that what our contractor had reported to us was in fact an error. In order to close it out, we were directed and commissioned a survey of the premises. And what that survey showed is what brings us before you today. Quite obviously, as I noted, our contractor telling us we were all set was in fact incorrect, and he made an error in construction. At the back of the addition is a door that is required by code. From that door leading to our backyard are a set of stairs. These stairs cause us to exceed the lot coverage ratio allowed by some 29.5 square feet. We learned this, again, when we did the survey. These stairs have been in place for roughly 22 years now. They're in our backyard, and frankly, they're invisible from the street. And we're here today to ask you, frankly, ask you for variance to allow them to remain in place. As part and parcel to this process, thankfully, Matt has guided me through it very carefully. We saw the approval of our three contiguous neighbors, and we have them here, Mr. Chairman, and I have the original and the copies. There are three contiguous neighbors. One thing I would point out to you is that one of our neighbors does in fact rent his property, and he himself resides in Hawaii. So instead of his signature, I do present an email from him expressing his approval. That would be Mr. John Hanson. Frankly, when we moved to the neighborhood, John's grandparents were essentially street neighbors of ours. And really, that is, I won't be short of it, I want to thank you for hearing now, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Mason? Yes, Jane.
Hi. The variance that you did receive, what was that for? What percent coverage?
The exact numbers, I'm not sure. I'd have to be looking at the survey to tell you, but...
You don't have a copy of the variance?
Um...
The original variance?
Sweetie, anything?
You might be able to leave this better than I could. It was already a non-conforming lot when we applied to the variance. Okay, so from what you see here, you didn't ask for a variance coverage at the time. So that, your over to now is brand-new information. It's not like you went a little bit beyond variance for coverage. There was no variance previously for step backs.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, not included with the application, but they are over about six tenths of a percent from what they're approved for.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone in opposition to the application? Hearing no, we'll take this up shortly. Thanks very much, Mr. Mason.
Thank you for your time.
Our next item that we have is number two on the general docket, 110 Strong Terrace, map 130, parcel 181, petition of Lee Oberland for variance of the zoning regulation, section 5.2.4.1, to reduce the side setback to the utility deck and stairs from five feet, proposing 4.4 feet, and zoning regulation 5.2.4.3, to reduce the side setback for an accessory structure from four feet, proposing 0.6 feet, and section 5.2.5, to increase lot coverage from 20%, currently 26%, proposing 27.5%. Permission to legitimize utility platform and stairs and two propane tanks, premises A zone. And, go ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Lee Oberland, the architect as well as the homeowner, and...
That's what threw me off, because I saw them in two places. Sorry.
Sounded more confusing. I'm getting confused as you're reading this. Yes, what you said, we're trying to legitimize the propane tank and the utility platform. Briefly, the house is just built this past year. The utility platform was not included in the variance request this past year. I didn't realize that, but apparently the surveyor didn't realize that needed to be included. It's an open platform, and then Matt obviously indicated that it should be, so that platform is what's increasing this variance or the number of the extra 1, 1 and 1/2 percent. That's one part of the increased coverage due to that platform. The second is the propane tanks. They were originally shown on the plan against the house. There's an open garage, and unfortunately, I guess, just understanding again, the, when that was being put in, the building department requested that it doesn't go against the house. I guess a little bit of a gray area, whether it can or can't, because the garage's not a habitable space, but they suggested that we move it, so we slid this 2,000-pound slab over, tied it down, and then that made it, instead of, well, that put it up against, close to the property line, and, let's see, what was the other? The, oh yes, and then the grate, the cantilel grate, the side that it wasn't counted, apparently it's six inches either wider than was on our plan, or six inches closer to the property line, 4.4 feet versus five feet. I'm not sure how that happened. It could have been my fault, because I think it was a steel platform, and it's an ICF, it's a concrete, stormfireproof homes, and I believe I remember that calling and saying, can we put angles to attach it to a concrete house instead of one way or another, and I think that protruded it out, the extra six inches, without me realizing it or anybody else. Now, all of the platform and the propane tanks are behind a fence, so you really can't even see them. My neighbor, you should have, that, the adjacent neighbor signed off and said they have no objection to the variances, and they are aware of it. As a matter of fact, they came by and took a look and didn't even realize it, because, as I said, it is behind a fence, so they're not really visible. And that's the, that was the side branch before and the something. So we're just looking to legitimize the platform, the propane tanks, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Oberland. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Oberland? Jane, go ahead.
You said the pad, that the tension is eight and a half inches high?
It's about eight and a half inches off the ground.
So my understanding is that this, like patio, for example, that's under 12 inches off the ground, it doesn't count for coverage? So why is this?
You know, I'm not sure. I know, Matt, you and I had that discussion. I think you thought it was higher than that, so I don't know. I think we may have included it in any way, but yes, it is only eight and a half inches.
Oh.
That's not part of the calculations for coverage. The...
But it is for setback.
The propane tanks are an accessory structure.
The propane tanks themselves?
Tanks themselves, yes.
Oh, okay, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
This is Harold. Is your property in the flood zone?
Yes.
And so have you met the requirements for raising your utilities to the proper level being in the flood zone, or are there any requirements for that?
You know, in the midst of still discussing that, everything is above elevation 12. There's a hot water tank. There's a tank itself that's, the building department says strapped down, which it is. It's on a platform about 200 feet high, and above elevation 12, on top of this tank is the little heating heat pump type coil. So that part of it is above elevation 12, the tank, which is, has no electrical or anything in it, is tied down according to the building department, so we're, I'm still actually trying to get in touch with FEMA. The actual petition responded to my email today, or last night, to find out about that tank. If worse comes to worse, the heating contractor said that he will take, buy a new tank, and raise even the tank and everything up and hang it up with ceiling. So we're trying to decide if we actually do need to replace that or not, but that is being taken care of.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Oberland? Okay. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone in opposition? Thank you, Mr. Oberland. Our next item that we have on our general docket is number three. That is 2150 Post Road, map 231, parcel 380, petition of 2150 Post Road Realty LLC for variance of zoning regulation, section 31.2.16, to reduce the setback from the edge of a building, two feet for every one foot in height. Attentors are 12 feet in height and are required to be 24 feet from the roof's edge, proposing 6 feet, 20 feet, 10 inches, 21 feet, 4 inches, and 23 feet... and 23 feet. Permission to install three new cellular antennas and one equipment panel box, premises DCD zone. And I think, is this presenting remotely?
Yes. Hi, Alec Glad from Cuddy &amp; Fader for the applicant. And I'm joined by Michael Jones from NK Development, who is Dish's site acquisition and AE specialist.
Go ahead, attorney.
All right, great, thank you. So just very quickly, a rundown of what we're looking to do here. So Dish is proposing a roof-mounted wireless facility at 2150 Post Road, and they are proposing to install three antenna on sled mounts on the roof of the existing building. This building is located in a predominantly commercial area in the backside of what's the MTA rail line. And Dish specifically selected this rooftop site because there are three existing carriers there, being Verizon, T-Mobile, and AT&amp;T. And so as part of the application materials, in addition to drawings, yesterday, Michael submitted to the zoning enforcement office a structural analysis, which confirms that the antenna can be safely mounted on the roof, as well as an RF emissions report, which confirms that the cumulative RF emissions from all four carriers is more than four times below the minimum exposure limit set by the FCC. And if this is your first Dish application, you're wondering why we're here. So Dish was awarded FCC licenses to provide wireless services as part of the Sprint-T-Mobile merger, because the government wanted to maintain four carriers. And so they are in the process of building out their network. So I just want to quickly note that this application is governed by federal law, but specifically, we were referred to the ZBA by the zoning enforcement officer for variances from section 31 to 16 for the setback from the roof building. And we are proposing a non-compliant setback, which is only six feet from the edge, because that is needed for the site to function correctly. If they were setback any farther on the roof, there would be RF shadowing, which means that the signal will not be able to project correctly off the building to get to the end user, and there would be gaps in the coverage, and the RF signal would be blocked by the edge of the roof. So from a practical-functional perspective, it can't be setback any further from the roof's edge. So, and this is not really a change to the existing condition, because we are located at the same setback, as you can see on the drawings that we submitted, as all the other carriers. So we are happy to answer any questions, either Michael or myself.
Attorney Glad, are you done? You're waiting for some questions from us?
Yes, yes, I'm done.
Okay, all right. Any questions? From Mr. Jones? I think it was submitted, the information, or the attorney? All right.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Maybe I missed it, but what is the hardship?
Um, so the site can't function. So we're requesting a variance from the requirement that... Or that something be setback off the roof, two feet for every foot in height that we exceed. And we're... We need to be placed six feet from the edge, and that is so that the signal can propagate off the top of the building correctly. If we're setback any farther, it would be blocked. It would start to be blocked by the edge of the building, because we would have to setback 24 feet in order to comply with that code requirement.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Harold, do you have a question? No, I... Okay. We searched, you caught my answer. All right, thank you, great. Now, open us up to anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone in opposition? Here or remotely? All right, I'll close the hearing on number three, 2150 Post Road. Thank you, Attorney Glad.
Thank you.
Next item that we have is number four. 190 Sherman Street, map 180, parcel 55. Petition of Mackenzie Real Estate Group LLC for a variance of the zoning regulation, section 12.7.6.2, to increase side setbacks from zero feet, currently four feet, proposing 4.9 feet. And section 28.6.6, to reduce the required number of parking spaces from seven, proposing five. Permission to construct a two-story rear addition, premises DCD zone. Attorney Fallon, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is John Fallon. I'm here representing Mackenzie Real Estate Group, which is the owner of the property and the applicant, Copio HR, which I'll speak about in a minute. Also with me here today is Mr. Jimmy Zumo, who did our survey work on this, and Mr. A. Clemente, who is the architect for this small addition. The Copio HR hopes and intends to be the occupant of this premises, as I'll elaborate on in a minute. And we're making the two applications for a modest addition, approval for modest addition, to allow us to accommodate those offices. As you can see from the plans that are submitted, the proposed addition will constitute only 287 square feet, but it does provide much-needed additional space to accommodate the needs of Copio HR. Copio is a human resources consulting firm that partners with small and mid-sized companies to help them to build and improve their HR practices and ensure they are completely compliant with those practices and operating safely. Importantly to the board, with regard to the application before you, the nature of the business is such that it only very rarely would have clients visit the offices of Copio. The company employs five core consultants, all of whom work on a hybrid schedule, three days onsite and two days remotely. All other employees function on a totally remote basis. So as previously indicated, the proposal was to construct a 287-square-foot addition, as shown on the plans that are submitted. As designed by Mr. Clemente, who's here today, I think it's an attractive design. It harmonizes properly with the character of a long-standing existing building on the property, and has a positive aesthetic impact. As the call with the case, the two variances we're looking for, R1, section 12.7.6.4, with regard to allowance of the continued side yard setback at something less than zero. The regulation, which is longstanding, is somewhat peculiar in that it envisions a zero side yard on one side. Why? I've had conversations with Mr. Wendt and others as to why you'd want to require that. In this case, though, it's... The existing building is already there. And that is what obviously drives the need for the addition and not having to put it up against the actual property line. As far as the variance for the parking, we are seeking a variance of section 28.6.6, to reduce the required onsite parking from seven to five. As I previously indicated, employees of the firm work on a substantially remote basis, and clients very, very rarely visit the offices of Copio HR. The office is carefully designed and planned to provide the continued technical capability to allow employees of the firm to work remotely. And we're very confident, based upon the nature of the business, that the onsite parking of five spaces, which will be more than sufficient to meet the need of the firm. And indeed, the property has been used previously for office use, and there's never been any issues with respect to that. So, from a legal perspective, we looked at Connecticut General Statute 86A3. You have to make two findings. One, that is what is proposed, and not going to substantially affect the comprehensive plan. I cite the Egan case, where our appellate court says that if the use to be made of the property after the variance is granted is a permitted use in the zone, that satisfies the first part of the test. In addition, as detailed above, and as I probably reiterated more than necessary, we only employ five full-time employees, who work on a remote hybrid basis, three days in the office, two days remotely. Everyone else associated with the company works totally on a remote basis. And I think these facts ensure that provision for parking is properly addressed by this application. With regard to the hardship, I cite a bunch of material in page three of my outline, which the board has recognized in the past, that with regard to properties located in the Center Design Business District, the application of current parking regulations to properties that existed and were previously existing prior to the adoption of those regulations establishes a factual basis for hardship, sufficient to grant relief from the current parking regulations. And as I said, this is a property that has, in fact, existed for many, many decades, and has some use for office use. With regard to the variance in section 12.6.2, regarding the side yard setback, the controlling legal fact here, from a hardship standpoint, is the existing structure is there. It's a legally protected, pre-existing, non-conforming structure with regard to this very setback requirement. And it is one that held by the courts, and I cite material there as well, that the historic location of a legally protected, pre-existing, non-conforming structure does, in fact, establish hardship basis for the granting of the variance with regard to setbacks such as this. And again, it should be stressed that we're not really doing anything but doing a very small 287-square-foot addition to this existing small building. So, subject to answer any questions, myself, Mr. Zumo, and Mr. Clemente might have for us. This is a company with very strong roots in the community, local, rural residents. The nature of the business operations, as previously described, is such that it's well-suited to accommodate the operational needs of the firm, based upon the employee activities that go on there and the fact that there's such a substantial commitment to remote working. From a legal standpoint, I think the application meets the technical requirements of the statute, based upon the fact that hardship has established this as previously found by the application of the current parking regulations to properties that have previously existed and been non-conforming as to parking within the Center Design Business District. And with regard to the side yard setback, as I said, the need for the variance to rise is solely due to the existing location of the pre-existing, non-conforming structure. So it's an application that I think is carefully planned. It's not a major addition, but it's one that will allow this particular property to be used as it is known for, in terms of a reasonable office use by the company that is perfectly suited in terms of its remote utilization of employee services. So please answer any questions that you might have.
Board have any questions for Attorney Fallon? Go ahead, Jane.
Hi. There are existing five spaces in the existing house space. Does that remove any space?
Oh, man.
Okay, thanks.
Attorney Fallon, it seems by the regs that if you went out to the property line, you would need an additional variance for more parking.
I lose the space.
Yes, and you'd... So they need extra if you went to there.
Right, yeah, exactly.
Any other questions?
And we looked at that. I mean, you know, you... Because that's... I don't want to get off on a tangent with this particular regulation, but you know, what all you have to do with this regulation, and Mr. Zumo and I have actually done it, you put a little box that can be used for garden tools attached to the building, and you say, "I got my zero setback." But that's unsightly, it's unfunctional, and in this case, it increases the parkages. But that's for another day.
Any other questions? All right, does anyone wish to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone opposed to the application? Here or remotely? There none? Close the hearing on 190 Sherman Street. Thank you, Attorney Fallon. Next item that we have is five and six. They are substantially similar, so I'll be calling them together. Number five is 50 Berkeley Road, Lot A, map 42, parcel 80. Petition of Julia G. Smith for a variance of zoning regulation, section 2.7, to reduce the lot frontage from 60 feet, currently 100 feet, proposing 50 feet. And section 5.1.1, to reduce the lot size and lot square from 6,000 square feet and 60 square feet, currently 10,000 square feet, proposing 5,000 square feet and 50 feet, premises B zone. And number six, 50 Berkeley Road, Lot B, map 42, parcel 80. Petition of Julia G. Smith for a variance of zoning regulation, section 2.7, to reduce the lot frontage from 60 feet, currently 100 feet, proposing 50 feet. And section 5.1.1, to reduce the lot size and lot square from 6,000 square feet and 60 feet, currently 10,000 square feet, proposing 5,000 square feet and 50 square feet. Permission to establish a building lot, premises D zone. Mr. Achilles, is that you? Go ahead, sir. Give us your name and address.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. My name is Bill Achilles from Achilles Architects. I'm here representing Julia G. Smith. And this application, an application which are for the reduction of the frontage from 50 feet to 50 feet from 60 feet, and the reduction of lot size from 5,000 to 5,000 square from 6,000 square feet, and of the minimum lot square of 50 feet in lieu of the 60 feet. What we are requesting is to allow this 100 by 100 square foot, 100 by 100 lot, to be split into two lots, each 50 by 100, in order to have one property that has a house on it to remain existing, and have another separate lot to be vacant for future residential use. The purpose of this is to allow two single-family houses in lieu of one two-family house that is certainly allowed by this 100 by 100 square foot property. What we would need is a variance of those three regulations to allow this residence to be legal in the 50 by 100, and to allow a separate lot to be 50 by 100 for future use. The existing residence complies with everything short of the regulations that we noted. We would not have to change the residence at all. It means all the regulations short of the... Short of the ones that we're requesting, the other lot needs that same amount of regulation change as a vacant lot. And any residence we would build would be within the regulations as far as size and shape of setbacks. The... The idea of allowing two single-family houses is desired by most of the neighbors. I have with us, with me, and I will submit 12 different neighbors that are in favor of that. One single... Two single-family houses in lieu of one two-family house. There is one neighbor that is opposed to it, but I don't know that this neighbor understands that two-family house is a lot. I... That's not for me to tell that person, one way or the other, whether or not they are for or against one-two-family house versus two-single-family houses. But I believe that they are misunderstood that one-two-family house certainly can be built. And we believe that we're within our rights to request two-single-family houses as opposed to one-two-family house. I think that's all we have on this.
All right, does the board have any questions for Mr. Achilles? Oh, I didn't see your answer. Go ahead.
Just because I was looking at it on my screen. What's the street frontage of the lot just to the one side? What's that street frontage there?
The one side here?
Yeah, the second.
That's 50.
It is 50.
Yes, and many of them are. I do have, and this little boy with the details. We do have, I do have quite a few of the lots. Our majority are 50 by 100 or 50s. Some are... Some are like this, one is 60. But the majority of them are small 50s for lots.
And then the house that... Sorry, the house that's there was built 2007. Where was the original house on that property?
The original house? I don't know the answer.
I don't know the answer. So, so Julia, one of them does know the answer to that.
It was a cottage in the corner here. Yeah.
And what's your name?
I'm Julia Smith.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Achilles? Or Ms. Smith, she's here? Okay, so the, the, the structure on Lot A, that is compliant, assuming we approve your others that are requesting the other, with the setbacks of a 5,000 square foot parcel.
And this is correct, the house itself is compliant. It does not need to be adjusted in any, in any fashion other than.
Lot coverage and floor area ratio. Any other questions? All right, is there anyone that wishes, yes. Okay.
Julia, do you want to like to submit? I'd like to go ahead and copy.
And, okay, good, Mr. Achilles, you included the map you just showed us, which shows the various lots around it at 50 feet. And now I'll open this up to anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the applications, five and six, 50 Berkeley Road, Lot A, and Lot B. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to the applications, 50 Berkeley Road, Lot A and Lot B, either here or remotely? And I know you addressed, there was one opposition neighbor, Mr. Achilles, in your, in your presentation, but doesn't appear that anyone else is coming forward to speak on that.
I believe that we've tried to talk to everyone.
All right, I'm going to close the hearing now. On number five and six, 50 Berkeley Road, Lot A and Lot B, we'll be taking that up shortly. Thank you, sir. Our next item is number seven, 142 Hunter Road, map 147, parcel 281Q, petition of John and Gabrielle Zavala for a variance of the zoning regulations, section 5.2.4, to reduce the sum of the sideline setbacks to 20 feet, currently 24.6 feet, proposing 24.6 feet, and section 5.2.5, to increase the total lot coverage from 20%, currently 26%, proposing 26.7%. Permission to construct a rear two-story addition and second-floor addition, premises A zone. And are the owners presenting that?
Yes, good afternoon, members of the board.
Okay, great.
My name is John Zavala, and my wife, Gabriella Zavala, we are the homeowners of 142 Hunter Road, and we're joined here by our architect who helped us with this project. We are seeking your approval for a 0.7% variance on the existing structure. We are hoping to deliver a design that is consistent with the design of the neighborhood already. We are looking to add a modest 6 feet in the back of the corner of the home, which would help us maintain a first-floor bathroom while we expand the kitchen design to adjust to factors, our growing family, in addition to the new hybrid work environment, where both my wife and I have to work from home. So we are hoping that these changes would help us create a more livable environment. The first-floor extension, as I mentioned, will include, maintain the first-floor bathroom. The kitchen would be a little bit more functional and adjusting to our growing family, as I said, but then the second floor would be a buildup of above the existing footprint of the garage and increase of that, the square footage, livable square footage, as I said, and create a primary bathroom and bedroom for us.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Go ahead.
No, I apologize.
Are you all done?
Yes, I am, I apologize.
All right, no, no worries. Does the board wish to ask any questions for Mr. Zavala, or, and I know they have their architect, so Levy as well on the call. Jane, go ahead.
Hi, I think, I don't know if it's missing just on the electronic version, but I don't see the second page where you explain your hardship. Can you do that?
So when, I can briefly describe it.
Why don't you jump in, Mr. Levy, you're their architect.
When we, when they purchased the house, they didn't realize that the deck and pool were unpermitted and already over the block coverage. So once we started the design and then we got the survey, we didn't realize that was over, so not necessarily, you know, a great factor, but we didn't realize that it was over already. And from going from 26 to 26.7, very minor lot coverage extension.
Mrs. Zavala, did you hear your architect, and do you want to add something to that?
Oh, yes, I apologize, there were, I'm not sure what these guys had off, but the factors that we were considering is the fact that we both now have to work from home. That's the one change that is motivated us to make this construction adjustment. The second factor is we have extended family that, so we're both a family out of the country, and they spend significant amount of time, probably about three weeks at a time, four weeks at a time, they come to visit. So that also becomes a challenge as we have growing family. So that's, those are the pieces that we're hoping to consider as we make this admission.
Yeah, we're just trying to create a more, if, like a better image, like first floor and on the second floor, it's just made an additional bedroom so we can have a guest room for this family as we already have to give.
In addition to that.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application, either here or remote? Is there anyone in opposition to the application, here or remote? All right, hearing none comments, we're going to close the hearing on 142 Hunter Road. We'll be taking that up shortly. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next item is the general document number 8288, Athley Road, map 49, parcel 49, petition of Arthur Brute for a variance of the zoning regulations, section 5.2.4, to reduce the street line and sideline setbacks from 40 feet, 30 feet to the open porch, and 15 feet currently, 18.5 feet and 14.8 feet, proposing 30.3 feet to the house, 26.4 to the open porch, and 14.8 feet. Permission to construct a two-story second-floor addition with attic and open front porch, premises R3 zone. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, gentlemen, hi everybody. I'm looking forward to get a permit for, to build the second floor in this house, but we've been more confirmed with the neighborhood, and we have in front of the house, we have a sunroom, what is right now 18 foot from the street line, and I'm looking to reduce that to 30 foot, but it, this house now is built on 30-foot zoning. And we're going to take also a porch in the back, and we're going to build on the side a garage, but that's confirmed with the zoning, no problem. And all the neighbors, they don't have any objection, and they are really very happy with this project.
And for the record, you are Arthur?
I'm Arthur Brute.
Okay. All right, does the board have any questions for Mr. Brute? All right, is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone in opposition to the application? Hearing none? We'll take that up shortly. Thank you, sir. Number nine on our regular document, which is, which is, that was, 250 Pequot Avenue has been continued to July. Board members, please save that application. Number 10, 111 Black Rock Turnpike, map 8-0, parcel 4, petition at Invest 2 for a variance of zoning regulations, section 28.6.12, to reduce the minimum required parking spaces from 400 into proposing 111. Permission to establish a brewery premises DI zone. And Mr. Riley, are you presenting?
I will, but Steve is going to, our attorney.
All right.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. Glad you're being here. I don't think I've ever appeared before your board. Previously, I was, my name is Steven Cardella, I'm an attorney, I'm located in Hammond, Connecticut, but I'm a very, very proud graduate of 1880 Fairfield University. Education served me well, I've been back here many times, love the town. I represent a restaurant group that has a brewery concept in Manchester that we would love to bring to Fairfield, and that's what we're going to talk about today. It's a relatively simple application with a couple of twists, but the stuff that we already worked out, tried to work out as best we can. So we're talking about 111 Black Rock Turnpike, so that's this property here. So it's the plan of fitness, that you come down the hill, and only about half of the building becomes exposed because of the grates. You come down the hill, you're going towards Ash Creek Boulevard, and you have that big yellow building that houses the gym. It was part formerly of the Bullards complex that was there. It's owned by the Atletic Invest 2, and we hope to be the tenants in the building. The building is only partially occupied now, the gym is leaving. So we are intending to occupy the entire parcel with our single use, and next to us is a parcel that used to house a big structure, it's been leveled, it's owned by a separate individual across the street, the BJ's, where the cinema is, you know, that parcel, and then we have the monstrous parking lot from a train station, okay? We do not intend to change the parking that's on that parcel. It's 111 spaces. The building is 25,000 square feet, it's been there for decades, it's gone through different iterations of use. Right now, as I said, it's currently a plan of fitness, it's been My Place Gym, Tumble Jungle, Boston Billiards, and then before, it was all part of the furniture complex. So it's a very, very large building on a relatively long, narrow parcel, and the zoning regs have grown up around it. So currently, your usage requirements on our intended application for the patch, the patron usage of the property of about 16,000 square feet would generate a requirement that we have over 400 parking spaces. So there isn't any way you could possibly locate 400 parking spaces on the parcel, since there's, it's already pretty much parking lot and building now, and there's 111. So what we've done is, rather than just rely upon the fact that there's plenty of parking in the neighborhood and parking at the train station, which is free to the people after, after hours, we actually have gone out and contacted the DOT, and we have presented in your package a letter from the DOT dated May 26, 2022, where they actually have granted us access to that lot for any of our spillover patron parking during our peak hours. And Ellis Riley, who's here along with Bob Hill, these are our two development guys, they know a lot more about when we need parking and when we don't, but it's been very easy discussion with the state because our usage and their usage dovetail perfectly. We're really not open when the commuters need a lot, and when we really need this spillover parking, it's going to be at hours in the evening on the weekend, and then that lot is essentially empty. So it looks like a nice marriage. And then Ellis and Bob are going to talk about the fact that we've talked to our neighbor as the vacant lot here, and we've actually discussed with the state and with the neighbor, we're going to be able to construct a very safe, secure pedestrian walkway that's going to get direct access to the property so that we know that we have the parking that's going to be dedicated and allocated for our usage. So that's the, in essence, that's the application, and we'll let Ellis and Bob take over.
Of course. Thank you, Steve, and thank you, Mr. Brute, we appreciate the opportunity. I'm going to discuss the concept a little bit, so you get a feel for really what we are, who we are, and then tie the whole thing together. So we're Elizabeth Reck company, we're part of the Eli Restaurant Group, which was started almost 28 years ago now. American casual dining in New Haven County, started by three brothers and a very close friend of theirs. And the concept is really something for everyone. You know, you can come in, there's a dining room, there's a nice sports bar area, and huge menu, so you can come out with a group of eight people and, you know, there's something for everyone to pick, drink, see, too. And that's really what we built our concept on in 2018, you know, being in the bar and restaurant scene, saw where the breweries were going, and being big fans of beer ourselves, decided to enter the brewery market. But we wanted to do it our way, so we really infused it with hospitality, and it's something for everyone. So our concept, Elizabeth Brewing, you know, it has the awesome craft years. I work with our brewmaster regularly, we were in there tinkering, figuring out the recipes, making some awesome brews. But we also have a kitchen, a craft bar, private event space, all of these things to really bring people together. You know, my wife doesn't drink beer, I still love her, doesn't drink beer, but you know, this is something we, so the way I've dragged her to a brewery is a very, very example. Now we can go, sit down, she can have a cocktail, I can have a beer, and we enjoy some food together, listen to an acoustic duo, really have a great time. So again, you know, if you're a group of 12, 130 people, we have this big space, you can all come in, it's almost like a choose-your-own-adventure, really see, do different things while you're there, and each time we'll have a completely different experience, and really give that something for everyone. And in brewing, community is this huge factor, and Fairfield is a lovely community. I think we built something awesome in Manchester and think that Fairfield would be a really great fit for it. And Mike Chanel and his entourage, I think, is an awesome building for us, and it's really just this parking situation, which, we don't open until 4 o'clock on weekdays, and we're open pretty much all day on the weekends. And that really coincides well with the train station situation, which parking is free on the weekends and after 5 o'clock, which is 93% of our business. The 111 spaces that we do have, it's really plenty for the majority of the time. I know based on the zoning calculations that we would need 400 spaces. I mean, really, our big open concepts, we like people to be able to move around. If we could have 400 cars there, that'd be fantastic, but just the way people experience the space, you know, we see with our Manchester property now, ride share is huge, people who bring, you know, using the lift, we're surrounded by apartment buildings, we expect a lot of people to walk. So the amount of parking we need, which, you know, is probably perhaps 200 spaces or so during our peak period, which are Friday night, Saturday night, which is the opposite of when the train station's using the parking, you know, that takes 1,600 space lot, should really work well for us, I think. You know, it's, it's a good parking relief, and again, it's really just our peak period that we, that we think we're going to run this issue.
Hi, Mr. Chairman and Board, I'm Mr. Bob Hill. I work for the Eli's Restaurant Group. I've actually known them for over 20 years and recently joined them, worked with them on this project as a permanent assignment. Really excited about the culture, the way the company operates, and the people that work for them, and what Ellis talks about in terms of the environment and the experience and creating an event for people to come visit. And it's not unusual, when you visit our other location, where we're doing this in Manchester, 4 o'clock in the afternoon, our customers are teachers from school, and they come in, one of the things they like, they kind of like the fact when they order their food, they all get their separate little disc to pay for their food separately, so they're not swapping over, that type of thing. paper for their food separately, so they're not swapping over, that type of thing. It's really a wonderful experience when you go in there at different times of day. Interestingly, 55% of our customers are over 35 years old. Probably, many of you probably would be surprised by that, but it is an experience that is enjoyed by many. We're not just a brewery, we're restaurateurs who've got into and learned the brewery business. We've developed 16 of our own brews. Ellis has actually created a number of those with our brewmaster. And of course, our brewmaster, he's got a beard like this, because that's what all brewmasters look like, right? Couple other pieces that just share about the concept, and about why we think, you know, our request should be given positive consideration. One of which is, there's, I believe, 1,000 apartments right in walking distance of the property, many of which are in the process of being built right now. We believe part of the reason for us agreeing to sign this lease to move forward with this property is that potentially those people being our customers. We fully expect that those people are going to be walking to the site. In addition to that, many of our customers at our current Manchester location, as Ellis mentioned, Uber in the evening, okay? A lot smarter than we were when we were younger, they know that you've got to be responsible about what you're doing. And we actually create incentives for people to Uber, so it's not unusual on Friday or Saturday night, when we're stamping people to let them know, okay, they can get a discount on some food or whatever. Because we want to encourage that, to be responsible in that way. And the third thing, and I hear this in a lot of the towns, about when developments happen, they look for shared parking, for people to share the parking with each other. And this could be no better example, in this case, where we've been able to work with the landlord, the next-door tenant, and the state, the DOT, to make maximum use of asphalt space, rather than trying to find space to create more asphalt space. So, you know, those are the reasons that we believe that this is a good project, and why hopefully you'll give us positive consideration. I'm going to put Steve back up to speak a little bit further, but thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, I just want to go through just a couple of things we've been talking about. So, not to confuse the point, because I think when you talk about what the zoning regulations would require, it shouldn't be equated with what we need. So, what I was trying to point out about the 400 spaces is, if you do the simple math, where we take a 25,000 square foot building, single usage, we take about 9,000 square feet and use it for kitchen, because we're going to have an inside kitchen facility. We're not going to have pizza trucks or hot dog trucks out in the parking lot like you see at a lot of breweries. It's basically a brewery with a restaurant attached, that's our concept. And we're also going to have brewing equipment there, to pretty much use up the space, because we have to rent the entire building. So, when we dedicate the 16,000 square feet, and then we do the math in the regs, that's where the 400 spaces come from. I didn't want to mislead anyone that we need 400 spaces. But in order to use the parcel, it would have to be able to accommodate 400 spaces, which is obviously going to be impossible based upon the size, because it's maxed out now with just a little over 100. So, talking about the cooperation between our future landlord who's here, hopefully he's here to speak in favor of the application, and not in opposition, I mean, you never would think that when you walk into these things. But, this parcel here is owned by a third party. Landlord went out and spoke to the third party, and they've agreed to allow the construction along the rear edge of their property of this pedestrian walkway, and that's the DOT lot that goes on forever. And this is the proposal that the DOT has reviewed and blessed, and which is described in the letter. So, we're going to actually end up with an official lease from them, where they allow us access, so that we know that we have the ability to access that parking lot, to make sure that any of the vehicle traffic that come into the area based on our use is going to be able to be accommodated on parking spots that are close to our building, and that we don't have to have people walking across the street, or imposing upon the neighborhood. So, and this is a rendering of what we think this is looking at the property from the train station. Nice, simple lot, the grade there is actually really convenient, it's almost completely flat. So, we would be able to get across, and it is the back of the parcel, that's our neighbor, between us and the train station, and get to the back of our property, so pretty much contain everything there. Wouldn't be throwing people back out onto the street, which you could do by parking in that parking lot now, and then you could, but you're walking back onto Ash Creek Boulevard, you have people that are in more or less in harm's way. This would be a better way for us to control the traffic in the area. So, just to summarize, I'm sorry I'm taking so much time. We have a site, it's a longstanding, existing site, it has a building on it that's legal, legally non-conforming. We have a zoning regulation that might apply to this application, makes the site unusable for this particular use. The hardship is that, for that, that fact, the fact that we have a building on the property to be put to any good usage is going to require many more times of the parking spots that the site could possibly hold. And we know that this usage in that neighborhood complies with your local comprehensive zoning plan. And we also, we also meet the second part of the test, because we don't have a self-imposed hardship here. We have a hardship based upon the site, its size, and its location in this zone, based on the size of the building that's on the parcel. So, that's what we would like to do, we'd like to have the variance of the parking regulation, section 28-6.12 for parking, to allow us to operate the Elizabeth Brewery at 111 Black Rock Turnpike. And we hope you look favorably upon this request when you deliberate. Thank you, and if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Traddello, Attorney Traddello. The board have any questions for Attorney Traddello, Mr. Riley, or Mr. Hill? Yeah, go ahead, James.
Hi, so there's a beer garden proposed for that building, so, right, outdoor?
Yes, yes.
So, does that patron space with that beer garden included in the calculation?
It was.
So, you're removing 18 spaces that exist, with the beer garden in, which requires you to have more space?
Correct, I know it's a whole back route, but we found that the concept essentially doesn't work in summer. I mean, when people, it's essentially employee space. I mean, if it's nice and warm outside, people are only outside and not inside. Because we, at one point, you know, our Manchester property originally did not have a patio, and the tenants severely dropped off, and the antiques doesn't quite work as well in the spring and the summer, because when people can't be outside, they really do want to be outside.
So, that's one question I have. And the other one, I'm looking at the site plan, right now, there's a fence between this property and the DOT parking lot?
Correct, correct.
Who's going to open, I mean, are you going to expect patrons to walk down the sidewalk and all the way around?
We're talking about the fences, our one track.
Yeah, currently, I mean, we're going to have to construct this badly, so right now, it's just some open brush. So, we're going to have to, you know, put the proper grade there, but we're going to have it lit, and open up the fence. That's part of what we're going to do with this.
Well, I'm not talking about that secret back basement, I'm talking about just getting to the DOT parking lot on public, in a public way, on public sidewalk.
Sorry, I missed understanding your question.
Will people walk down the access road between Ash Creek?
Yeah, this is.
I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about the other end of the property.
Talking about walking down Ash Creek?
Yeah, you walk down Ash Creek.
People could do that, we're hoping they don't, it's quite a distance, it's over a quarter mile, you mean?
Which one are we talking about, hang on a second, where's that located?
Ash Creek Boulevard?
Right, round the way around that way.
Right, so people who are going to park in the DOT are expected to walk down that road to get to the parking lot?
Yeah, that is part of the reason for the walkway to be put in, to alleviate that problem, so that we'll be walking basically parallel to the railroad tracks.
Right.
Behind the other landlord site, where we'll basically put a walkway in and fencing for that area to remain safe.
But you don't own that section?
No, but what we have is, we have an easement agreement that's going to go into place with this property owner that allows access here, and the fence that's here to be removed. We have a lease agreement with the DOT that's going to allow, again, the opening through a walkway that we're going to construct, and which is going to allow the pedestrian access.
Because that proposed law, it doesn't appear on any of these drawings that are submitted with the variant application? This is just something you're?
That's in that package, the renderings are in the package, it's probably going to guarantee that on review.
So, that was part of this?
So, what we expect to have as part of the easement agreement is the right to have the direct access onto the property off of ours, and the ability to leave their property out to DOTs. And in the DOT lease agreement, will be a right to access our neighbor's property from their lot for the construction of a contiguous walkway, so that the parcel that we're going to be occupying has a legal right to get all the way to the train station.
So, but the lease agreement you're suggesting is going to be between the tenant, the brewery, the tenant, and the next-door neighbor, or from the property owner?
That's an easement agreement, is going to be between the two. So, the property owner, and this is Chanel here.
Right.
And this property owner has an easement agreement that allows you to walk along their property. DOT is granting a lease of those spots to this property, and this property can access their lease through, technically, either way, but the intended way would be to utilize it through this direction on the right of way.
Is that a deed of easement, or just a?
No, this is what, this agreement here with the neighbor is going to be a deed of easement, the agreement requires the land records. And this is going to be a license agreement, a lease, a license, whichever way the state terms it, which would also be a deed of right, so that we would have to establish our legal rights to do this, in order to support our use.
So, is that a condition of this variance, is that, that deed of agreement will be part of this whole package?
We, if that was a condition that the board put, that's a condition of board.
I'm just asking you.
But would we, you're asking if we would accept it? That's what our intention is, so, we would like, the way that the application process, as I interpret it is, we have a variance we request because of the number of spaces. So, we need a variance to allow that use on the space.
You can't impose a condition on you, you can include it in your proposal, is that correct?
We didn't.
Attorney Traddello, you could offer that as a condition of our approval.
Right.
We wouldn't be able to impose that, but if you offered it, then it'd be a different story.
We're willing to accept as a condition of the variance, both the easement over 81 Black Rock Turnpike, and the license and or lease agreement with the DOT. Those are two conditions we would be more than willing to accept.
How long was that lease agreement with the DOT due for that term?
It would be as long as our, so we have 10-year with four, five-year options, they agreed to match that.
They were going to dovetail it with our lease. During our meeting, they agreed that their lease agreement would dovetail with our lease with the landlord.
Part of that was really to alleviate the condition you brought up, we don't want people to walk around on a guideline.
Any other questions? For any of them, okay. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Here? Are we here or remote? Is there anyone that wishes to oppose the application? 111 Black Rock Turnpike, here or remote? Okay, hearing none, thank you Attorney Traddello, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Close the hearing on 111. Number 11, 461 Riverside Drive, map 130, parcel 45. Petition of Robert and Jennifer Gainer for a variance of zoning regulation, section 5.2.4 to reduce the street line, sideline, and some of two sideline setbacks at 30 feet, 7 feet, and 20 feet. Currently, 32.3 feet, 6.9 feet, and 18.3 feet. Proposing 25.3, 6.9 feet, and 18.3 feet. And section 5.2.5 to increase lot coverage 20%, currently 23.7%. Proposing 25.1%. Permission to construct a one-story addition with open front porch premises, a zone. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you so much for allowing me to put my request in for variance. My name's Jennifer Gainer, I'm here on behalf of myself and my husband, Robert Gainer, who are both homeowners. We moved to Fairfield from Easton in 2015 with our five-year-old son. We really wanted to get into Sherman Elementary School before he started. So, we rented the property at 461 Riverside Drive as of 2015. As of 2018, we actually purchased the home from our landlord. So, we've been there ever since, and now with recent events with COVID, and myself and my husband have been working from home. We have recently moved my dad from Rhode Island, who now is no longer driver car. He's got a walker and all of that, moved him to the area, so he's been over our house quite a bit. We started to look at the property, and we are, we're asking for the variance to add a modest addition to the front of our home. We live in a small cape in the beach area, and prices in the beach area have gone die-high. So, it's getting considerably more difficult for us to stay in the area, keep our zoning school there, and sort of look for a safer space. So, what we are requesting to do is add on a seven-foot by 32-foot addition to the front, so that approximately 210 square feet. We currently have a front porch that is 7 feet by about 20 feet. So, what we're proposing is basically enclosing that, and then extending that out to the edge of the property. So, that's a permitted porch that exists there now. So, the hardship would be on the ground of configuration, size, and dimension. The minimum requirement lot size in the area is 9,375 square feet, and the property is 5,787 square feet. It's been recalculated since it was purchased by us from 6,155 square feet. So, we have marshlands in the back, in the back corner of the lot, so when it got recal, you know, the buildable lot size got recalculated down smaller. The minimum square on the lot is 75 feet, and the existing condition is 49.83 feet. And the minimum lot frontage is 75 feet, and the existing conditions are 55, which again, were, sorry, the existing conditions are 50, and when the home was purchased, the minimum was actually 20 feet. So, at this point, we, you know, to be able to enclose that porch area and add on, we are requesting a variance, we, I can submit these pages here. We have signatures from neighbors, three neighbors signed. And you, I believe, I saw an email come through from our, one of our neighbors, Sharon Goldstein, the folks that were distributed, with her, very generously, giving her consent for the project. In that packet, you'll see, we put the architectural plans on there, so you can see, you know, what we're planning. We are planning to keep within the size and scale of the rest of the beach homes along Riverside Drive. And, if you have any questions, happy to try again.
All right, thank you, Ms. Gainer, the board have any questions? All right, is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone in opposition? All right, we're going to close the hearing on 461 Riverside Drive, thank you. Next item for consideration is number 12. 112, Bel Air Lane, map 76, parcel 267. 115 Bel Air Lane, map 76, parcel 267, petition of Benoit de Costa and Rosa Parata for variance of the zoning regulations, section 5.2.4, to reduce the street line setback from 30 feet, currently 21.7 feet, proposing 21.7 feet, and section 5.2.4.3 to reduce the street line setback for open porch for 20 feet, currently 18 feet, proposing 13.6 feet. Permission to construct a second floor addition and open front porch premises, a zone. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board for having us here. My name is Benoit de Costa. I own the, I own the property at 115 Bel Air Lane. We purchased that house in early 2014, beginning staying there since then, always fear of COVID as well. We found ourselves working at full block, so thinking of expanding our house. As part of that, we did a survey, and we found out that the existing property is a non-conforming block, and what we are asking is, assuming is permission to build a second floor on top of the existing footprint of living room and the garage, as well as constructing an open porch, which is what the agenda of the issue, and that's what we're seeking.
Board, have any questions for Ms. De Costa?
Yes.
Go ahead, Jane.
I'm just trying to make sense of the site plan. It says that you're proposing to reduce the rear setback from 17.4 feet, or to increase the setback from 17.4 to 35.4 feet? Or are you making down?
Not the rear setback.
That's what the grid says on the site plan.
So the existing setback at the front of the house, as you can see, is non-conforming.
Right.
And we're just building a second floor on top of the garage and the living room without increasing the footprint.
Okay.
So it's like grandfathering.
Okay, so there's just a?
Yeah.
Maybe a glitch on that. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. De Costa? Any other questions? Is there anyone who should speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone in opposition to the application? 115 Bel Air Lane. All right, hearing nothing. Thank you, Ms. De Costa. We'll be taking that up fairly and closing the hearing on 115 Bel Air Lane. Our next item is number 13. 319 Harbor Road, map 241, parcel 1, petition of 319 Harbor Road LLC for a variance of zoning regulations, section 5.1, to legitimize the number of dwelling units on one lot from one, currently three, proposing three. Permission to legitimize three dwellings on one lot and remove and rebuild the principal dwelling premises, R3 Zone. Attorney Russo, you're presenting this remotely?
Yes, Chairman, Chairman, members of the board, Chris Russo with Russo and Rizzo LLC, offices at 10 Sasko Hill Road in Fairfield, on behalf of the applicant who's the owner of 319 Harbor Road. I apologize, Chairman. I would normally have let the board know before the hearing started that we were going to request a deferral, but I actually talked to an attorney that's representing one of the neighbors after the hearing had started. So if I could request a deferral, we've agreed to meet with them and discuss the application. If we could request a deferral to your next hearing in July, it would be greatly appreciated.
Of course, Attorney Russo. Always like for the neighbors to discuss things before they come to us. So we're going to continue number 13, 319 Harbor Road, to our July hearing. Board members, please save that application. Thank you, Attorney Russo.
Thank you.
Next item is number 14. 88 Dwight Street, map 182, parcel 73, petition of Victor Nessie for variance of zoning regulations, section 5.2.5, to increase lot coverage from 20%, currently 22.5%, proposing 22.9%. Permission to construct a platform for a standalone generator premises, a zone. Go ahead.
Chairman, members of the board, James Zumo, Land Service Services, 1275 Post Road, Suite 820. My client is wishing to put in a generator pad, as all houses do in the beach area. The current project is under construction, and I just wanted to note that none of these variances are because of construction errors. We have not done an ad build or anything out there, so I'm not here asking for forgiveness. All I'm here is asking for permission to construct a generator deck, and being in a flood zone in the beach area has to be elevated, and when it becomes elevated, it then increases coverage. There was a variance granted later in 2021, I believe it was October, for a variance for the coverage at 22.5% or 22.3%. When we did our existing condition survey, it was 22.5%. They were reducing it a little bit. After the project had been sold to the current owners, they wished to put a generator deck in. We are oversizing the generator deck for the future possibility of a pool. In the event that a pool gets put in, they would like to elevate all of their equipment for that pool. So again, flood zone, everything has to be elevated. I have gone to the neighbors, I think on the hottest day of the year so far, on Monday, and swam up and down Mallard Street and Dwight Street. Submit all these to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll submit those for PDF as well, so those are digitally in there as well.
No neighbor had an issue with it. Everybody signed off. I was only, I was unable to contact one neighbor. I left their card there. I have not heard from them. One of the neighbors is one of our constant clients, William Levy. I spoke to him on the phone today, and he says he's all good with everything. If you have any questions, you may ask away.
All right. The board, have any questions for Mr. Zumo? All right, is there anyone that wants to speak in favor of the application? Anyone in opposition to the application? 88 Dwight Street. Hearing nothing. We're going to close the hearing on 88 Dwight Street. Thank you, Mr. Zumo.
Thank you.
Our next item for business is number 15, our regular docket, 492 Penfield Road, map 138, parcel 202, petition of John Sorenson and Julie McMahon for variance of zoning regulations, section 5.2.4.1, to reduce the side setback for an accessory structure from 5 feet, proposing 3.1 feet, and section 5.2.5 to increase lot coverage from 20%. Currently, 19.9%, proposing 22.1%. Permission to construct a rear deck with stairs and a platform for a standalone generator premises, a zone. Attorney Fallon, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is John Fallon. I'm here today representing the property owners, John Sorenson and Julie McMahon. Mr. Sorenson is seated in the back row there, just to put his hand up. Also with me is Dennis Peters, our designer, who designed the deck and the pad, the subject of the application. This is property located in the residence, a zone, as I'll elaborate on. It's a legally protected, pre-existing, non-conforming lot with respect to both lot area, shape, and frontage. The parcel consists of 9,000 square feet, wherein the provisions of the zone establish a minimum required lot area of 9,375 square feet. Still believe a lot square is 50 feet, whereas the current regulations contemplate a square of 75 feet. Lot frontage is 50 feet, which is also 25 feet less than what the current requirements are. We made this application and support indicates in order to construct a deck, as shown on the plan, and a generator deck, as shown on the plan submitted here. To facilitate that, we are requesting a variance for the generator platform with regard to section 5.2.4, 5.2.4.1, to reduce the side yard setback from 5 feet to 3.1 feet. That will accommodate the generator. We're also seeking a variance of section 5.2.5 to increase the lot coverage from 19% to 9% to 22.1%, which will accommodate both the construction of the unenclosed deck and the generator. From a legal perspective, you look to Connecticut General Statutes 8-6, the variance must be shown to affect the comprehensive zoning plan, and you must establish that there's some basis with regard to the property that establishes hardship, as our law recognizes it. With regard to the first part of the test, again, cite the Egan material, the Egan case, wherein the court holds that if it used to be made of the variance, after the variance is granted, is it permitted use in the zone, then the first part of the test is met. Here, we're not going to change the use of the property of the single-family home. It will remain as such. This only involves a deck, so the home can be enjoyed by the Sorenson family and a pad for the generator. We're not taking any other variances than those that we do request, and I will submit that is designed by Mr. Peter. Mr. Peters, the deck is very attractive in design and will benefit the overall character of the neighborhood. We did submit a petition. I don't know that if I got this to submit to you electronically. I can do that now if you want, but for now, I'll give you copies of it. The resident at 480 Penfield is a neighbor who's 90 years old. She has been hospitalized with a serious heart condition for two weeks. Mr. Sorenson went to the property three or four times. We obviously submitted a letter that the P&amp;Z submitted, that the DBA sent, and of course, we have not heard anything from her with regard to that, and really, we would openly expect that she would not have any issue with this, but we did make attempts to contact her directly. Obviously, this was noticed in the newspaper, and also, she did receive a letter with regard to our request. With regard to the hardship requirement, the controlling legal fact here is, as I think I said before, the lot is a valid and legally protected non-conforming lot as it relates to both the current lot area and shape requirements. The lot comprises, as I said, 9,000 square feet, where 9,375 is standard, and the square is 50 feet. The cases that I cite, my material established that when you have such a pre-existing non-conforming lot, the benefit of protection extends to the fact that the lot is subject to coverage, and in this case, setback requirements that contemplate a larger lot and a narrower lot or a wider lot. And in this case, those cases that I cite establish that such factors do establish hardship for sufficient granting of variance with regard to coverage, and also, in this case, the small variance to accommodate the side yard for the generator platform. So in summary, the decks that we proposed are, I think, attractive in design. They harmonize with the neighborhood. There are many, many decks of this type in this particular neighborhood. The legal standards for hardship, I think, are established by the legally protected non-conforming status of the lot as to both lot area and shape, and obviously, we'll be complying with all other provisions of the zoning regulations with regard to the lot. So if we, and if certain questions you may have, I'm hoping you will be able to consider the application.
Thank you, Attorney Fallon. Board, have any questions? Go ahead, Jane.
Why isn't the generator on the other side of the house where you wouldn't need the variance?
Mr. Peters, would you want to address that? Come forward and identify yourself. The question was, why is the generator on the side of the house?
Dennis Peters, I put together, I also put together the plans and renderings. The biggest consideration there was the proximity of the existing window, so that would, the setback or the offset of that window as it relates to the generator doesn't conform to the requirements from a building cost standpoint.
You couldn't put on the other, you couldn't put on the other side.
If we put it on the south side, there are windows on that side which would prevent the installation of that generator. As a matter of bill we could.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Any other questions? Is there anyone who wants to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone in opposition to the application? 492 Penfield. All right, we're going to close the hearing on 492 Penfield. Thank you, Attorney Fallon.
Thank you very much.
And we're going to suspend the hearing now, take a 10-minute break, and we'll be back at 5:00 of 4:00 to reconvene. Call back to order, Fairfield Zoning Board of Appeals, June 2, 2022. We're going to reconvene our working session. We have several items to consider. The first to consider is on our continued docket number 3, 1386 Hillside Road, petition of the mail-ins. Attorney Fallon presented it for the one-story pool house. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Jane, is there a second?
Second.
Like it's always been.
Yeah, I mean, it fits. There's some good arguments in favor. Four, usually don't get one or two hardship-type areas.
This is Harold.
Yep.
Yeah, we noticed that there are numerous favor of this in looking at the location of the pool house relative to the lot. Seems that there's going to be a large, still a large area behind the pool house that would be not affected by the pool house itself.
Mm-hmm. Great. All right. Thank you to both. Elise?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, in favor. Yes. Okay, it's been granted. Number 12 is 888 Old Field Road. That's been continued on our general docket number 1, 11 South Field Road, petition of the Masons, and was presented by the owners. It's to legitimize a construction error. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Elise. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Discussion?
Reasonable. Yeah. A reasonable request.
And they're under the FAR.
The system minimum.
All right, bring it to a vote. Elise?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Yes, that's granted. Number 2, 110 Shoreham Terrace, petition of Mr. Overland. He presented his application. It's to legitimize utility platform stairs and the tanks for various regulations and variances. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Jane. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Harold. Okay, discussion?
They're minor items. A little bit of a variance, so.
Yes. The minimum.
All right.
As was pointed out, you know, anything below 12 inches is not considered measurable. Is that correct?
That's for coverage. That's the discussion with the tanks themselves.
Ah, yes.
Structure considered.
Structure.
So that's why it needed a night.
Yeah, it's not good to have the tanks right next to the house.
Uh-uh. And if it's a mission structure, it is considered a, for tax purposes, it's considered a, what was the term? An accessory, yes.
All right, thank you. Elise?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Harold? Yes, it's granted. Number 3, 2150 Post Road, Attorney Glad presented this. This is for the cellar towers and equipment panel. Entertain a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Kate. Is there a second?
Jane, a second.
Thank you, Jane. Discussion?
I may be the only one, but I did not, I didn't get a clear answer on what the hardship was, other than the antenna wouldn't function because of the building, that and then do the property. Is that right?
That's what I understood also. It just wouldn't work if they put it in the place it's supposed to be.
Who benefits from having this tower? Is it the building owner, the resident, or some other entity? Well, who benefits from having this tower? Is it the building owner, the resident, or some other entity?
I think it's a lot of people.
Yeah, for everybody using that.
All of the above, Harold.
The building owner probably has a lease, plus they'll go in there, but use that service, benefits because it makes the service better. The question I can't, that I'm trying to kind of have, is, there's already towers on top of that building, but are these going to be far more visible than?
What exists?
Yeah.
I'm not certain.
Hard to tell. It sounds like they're, it sounds like they're still, it sounded like what they were saying, they're in line, looking at the survey, they're in line with what's currently there.
Right.
So they're not going to change much.
Not that we have to find a precedent, but we've approved things like this before, but the discussions is usually things like cell towers and overhead electric line. We don't, we don't see them. I mean, they're there, but we don't see them. Yeah, so I guess they will have a good time.
I agree.
Bring it to a vote. Elise?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Number four, one ninety Sherman Street, petition of Mackenzie Real Estate Group. Attorney Fallon presented this to construct a two-story rear addition, and they needed the parking variance, and then the setback, if you will. Entertain a motion to approve.
Listen to this.
Thank you, Katie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Elise. Discussion?
This is Harold. I'm not sure I understand what the additional construction is for, and if it's first floor or second floor or both.
Both of them, yeah. It's expanding, and so the office space on the first floor, and then there's additional office space on the second floor.
So it's for additional office space to the building?
Yeah.
They're not removing a space, so that's, that's good. There's what they have.
Yeah, I mean, it's, we've had a couple of the, pretty good off-street parking, and I don't know if their attorney would want to have a parking issue on the same street that his offices is either.
And I think the hybrid and remote is a legitimate argument for having that number of spaces.
Remember, this brand, this is, for this particular tenant, the tenant might change.
Right.
So the variance stays with the property.
Yeah.
So this is Harold. I mean, Sherman Street is a changing street. There are older home offices on the building, older construction, and there's new buildings. I think it's good to keep the character of the street to be mixed between the old and the new.
Yeah. Having actually, that should help.
All right, bring it to a vote. Elise?
Yes.
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Harold? Yes. Say yes, that's granted. Number five, five and six are together, but I have to make the, have to decide separately. Number five is fifty Berkeley Road Lot A. This is where they want to take the ten thousand square foot parcel and make it into two building lots. Entertain a motion to approve, number five, which is fifty Berkeley Lot, fifty Berkeley Road Lot A.
So moved.
Elise, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. And discussion, and this is the, Mr. Achilles, the architect presented this.
This is Harold, kind of new to the, asking.
No.
Not other questions, but to my understanding that this is a one hundred by hundred, one hundred square foot lot, one hundred by one hundred, and the appellate, the person coming before, with the variance, wants to split this to five thousand square foot parcels. That is within the zoning.
But what they're, in that area, there's supposed to be six thousand square feet instead of five thousand, okay? And they're supposed to have a sixty-foot square instead of fifty. The issue here, Harold, is that historically in this area, there were fifty, fifty by a hundred foot lots.
Yeah, we throw that in the diagram.
Yeah, and a lot of, what happened is when the original purchase, they usually purchased lots side by side, and a house, and here, you have this, this house that was built over on the, on the one lot.
And one more question. This is split A and B. Is it designated as Lot A and B in the town records?
No.
So it's, we're designated Lot A and Lot B for on the proposal to have a Lot A and a Lot B. I see. Thank you.
And then who decides the house numbers?
Post office. I think, I believe it's the post office, I don't know.
Yeah.
It's above our pay grade. Who decides?
Who decides the post, the?
Engineering department.
Engineering, okay. I stand corrected.
Well, the house that's there, this fairly new until two thousand seven, conforms to the zoning requirement, so any future house that's going to occupy this empty lot, we assume is also going to be within.
That's what he represented.
Compliant, or they need a, need a variance and a good reason, because we would know that a variance
But we will remember if they come before us.
And it needs to be, particularly because the neighbors are in favor, I mean, it's probably better for the, the grand list have two single-family houses, multi-family, and we have residents, parents, but just previously.
They're not going to knock down a house until two thousand seven, or two thousand eight, or something like that.
They could though, but that's what they said.
All right. On number five, Lot A, let's bring it to a vote. Elise?
Yes.
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 Yes, yes. Okay, now, on number six, fifty Berkeley Road Lot B, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Elise. Second?
Same second.
Thank you, Jane. Discussion?
Same, similar to the last one.
Same, we did that.
Yeah, we will, we will remember.
On Lot, on Lot A. All right, Elise?
Yes, yes.
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 Yes, it would be difficult to, for one and not the other. Number seven, one forty-two Hunter Road, petition of Savalos with Mr. Levy's assistance, and this is to construct rear two-story second-floor addition. Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Jane, a second.
Thank you, Jane. Discussion?
Minor.
Minor, minor.
Yeah, and Mr. Levy gave the issue of the hardship, you know, Savalos, we appreciate their concern, but there's just a little bit more personal to it. He gave some information for that. All right, Elise?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, Harold, thank you. Yes, it's granted. Number eight, two eighty-eight Adley Road, Mr. Bruch, he presented his application, and it's to construct two-story second-floor addition, attic front porch. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Jane, second?
Second.
Thank you, Katie?
Yes.
Check my earrings on the left side. Discussion?
It will be an improvement in the property, and hardship.
Not conforming lot.
All right, Elise?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, yes, that's granted. Number nine, two fifty Peak Rock Avenue was continued. Number ten, one eleven Black Rock Turnpike, petition of Invest Two, Attorney Chudello presented this. We had Mr. Riley and Mr. Hill also, and it's to reduce, you know, reduce parking spaces from a hundred, from four hundred and two to a hundred and eleven to establish a brewery. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Harold. Discussion?
Okay, so is a brewery a restaurant?
Well, they're going to have a restaurant with the brewery.
So if the brewery?
Was it just a brewery?
If it doesn't succeed, and we've approved less parking than what's permitted, that reduction in parking stays with the property, when another restaurant moves in, correct?
Yes, yes. I inadvertently forgot to include conditions, and Elise, would you like to amend your?
I'd like to, right, I'd like to amend.
Your motion to approve?
Prove to the conditions that were represented.
Of number one, there's easement over eighty-one Black Rock, and there's a license or a lease with the state of Connecticut Department of Transportation?
Yes, so moved there.
And so some of the seconds, that?
Second.
Okay. And discussion on the amended motion? Do we want to have the amended motion?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor of the amended motion?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, so the amended motion to approve it with the condition of easement over eighty-one Black Rock Turnpike and a license or a lease, that's exactly what Attorney Chudello's indicated with the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation for allowing parking in their parking area. So let's continue our discussion with the amended motion to approve.
So those conditions are between the property owner and the state, and the property owner and the property owner next door, there's nothing to do with the tenant, correct?
Yes.
So those will stay as well if another tenant moves in.
This is Harold, and if a tenant comes in where the third property that was discussed next to
Eighty-one.
Yes.
Eighty-one, yeah.
It's a separate owner. If they build on that, will they have the ability to rescind the right of way?
Going to be difficult.
The easiest, so the
You didn't say it, you missed the D, correct?
And my other question is, how many parking spaces did this business was allowed, was planning this lab?
They had a hundred and, like, thirty.
Well, they had a hundred.
Because there were some in the back, as Jane pointed out, there's a garden area in the back.
But that's, that's different use.
So it's based upon the use, but, but the, Mr. Fallon, I think, pointed out that a good portion of the building will be used for the equipment for the brewery and also for the kitchen.
True, but they're also saying, the fact that they don't have enough parking is due, is because of what's there, but then they're also, in addition, taking away eighteen spaces out the back, so they're making that worse.
Is there a condition to determine that would be based on the number of seats?
The parking is calculated on the square, the patron, so it's not number of chairs, tables, it's, you know, you could remove the tables, you know, people, that's part of the, what COVID had, people had to remove tables, you know, and, but their parking requirements didn't go down.
Right, and it's the fire department that limits the number of bodies.
I mean, I
And if you look at, with the easement and the lease, with the DOT, it's not unlimited number of spots, but there's a lot of spots at the train station.
This, I think it's a very good use for this building.
I agree.
Good use for that area, helping that area. We've approved many downtown with the parking, the restaurants, because they can use the parking near the train station, which is a lot smaller than this train station parking. I mean.
Did we establish that it's outside of the fifteen hundred, whatever it is?
You don't have to worry about that.
You don't have to worry about that. You don't worry about that.
Yeah, yeah, that got changed.
Okay.
Thank God. Thank God that was changed. And if, you know, who knows what the planning is going to do, but there's obviously a discussion of allowing forgiveness for more outdoor dining involved in parking, which is, personally, I think is advisable. You know, I think this, I think it's a good use of a building in an area downtown that needs to be helped out, and our economic, it's part of our package, and I told Ms. Barnhart, you know, is fully support and help them with the DOT, so that'd be good all around.
Right, and with the, we have no control over what those conditions take place, but if they do, then we're good to go, but if they don't?
Yeah, I think the important thing is, the most important is that easement and the right to make that path, because we don't have agreements and licenses relative to the parking downtown. A lot of those places here, they're going a step further, which is even better.
Yes.
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes. After drinking beer and eating pizza, we'll just have to get exercise somewhere else.
You can walk the long way, Jane, but I'm asking about. All right, number eleven, four sixty-one Riverside Drive, Ms. Gainer presented the application for her own property, construct one-story addition, open front porch. Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Katie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Elise. Discussion?
The hardship is there based on the property, and it's not that much, what it is, it's one point four percent more.
Yeah, and we're not, it's not an old build in that area, twenty, what's it, twenty-four hundred square foot home, adding a couple of two hundred square feet.
This is Harold.
Yep.
It does look, from the photos and the plans that I saw, that there are significant changes to the roof line over the porch construction. Does that, is that two hundred square feet included in whatever addition is going to be underneath the roof?
Well, we have a lot coverage, so if it's already there, whether you have a second floor or a third floor, that's already part of your lot coverage. So, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
All right, bring it to a vote.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Number twelve, one fifteen Bel Air Lane, Mrs. Takata, he presented the application for him and his wife on that, and it's to construct second-floor open front porch. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Jane. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Katie. Discussion?
It's an odd-shaped lot.
Yeah, the end of the cul-de-sac was weird.
Three and a half.
Elise?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Harold? Yes. Number thirteen, that was continued. Number fourteen, thirteen, sorry, three nineteen Harbor Road, that's continued. Fourteen eighty-eight Dwight Street, Suzumo presented this, and it's for the standalone generator. Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Elise? Discussion? Harold, we've got to jump in on the next one.
I spoke too soon.
I have a question, though.
Yeah.
Looking at the real estate information online, it looks like this house is under contract. I'm wondering who owns it? Is Mr. Nessie, is he the owner, or is he the potential owner? I mean, who is?
So Nessie, Mr. Nessie would be the owner.
Current owner.
That's because of the applicant, because of the land. It's just like, we have Alyssa Brewing Company, were, did all the speaking, but Invest Two is the applicant on the brewery application.
Yeah, so it's the current owner who is requesting this, even though it's under contract.
The person under contract is probably paying, Mr. Suzumo, but it's not necessarily relevant to our to know.
Okay.
I think it's a reasonable request, it's a de minimis amount.
All right, Elise?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.